Good evening, executive members, fellow councillors, officers. And we have no one in the public gallery, I see, but anyone watching in on our webcast this evening. And welcome to this evening's meeting of the Waverley Executive. If I can move, please, to item one of the agenda, which is to confirm the minutes of the meeting that was held on the 10th of July. Are those agreed, colleagues?
Are those agreed, colleagues?
Thank you. I will therefore sign those at the end of the meeting. If we move to item two of the agenda, which is apologies for absence. Thank you.
Thank you, Leader. We've had apologies from councillor Jenny Els.
Thank you very much. And if we move to item three, can I just ask Ms Cameron any declarations of interest?
None, Leader.
Questions from members of the public?
Also none.
And questions from members?
None.
Thank you very much. In that case, colleagues, that takes us on to item six of the agenda. And that is the new economic development strategy for Waverley for 2018 to 2023. Now, I will first of all, I believe we've got several speakers registered on that. So if I can ask councillor Beaman to start with, we'll then go through the other registered speakers and I'll then come to the portfolio holder councillor Edwards. Councillor Beaman, if you'd like to start, thank you.
Yes, good evening, Leader and members. Yes, I'm a bit perturbed really, because I'm here to read a statement from the vice-chair of the Value for Money and Customer Service Overview Strategy Committee, that's councillor Mullin, who can't be here tonight, I'm afraid, because he was mainly involved in this strategy. So the statement I'm going to read is councillor Mullin's, not necessarily my words, but nevertheless, I fully support them. Let's start. The background. The first draft of the economic development strategy was published in June 2018. Many councillors expressed significant reservations about both the approach and the content of the document. The principal criticism related to its lack of realism about the capacity of Waverley Borough Council to deliver an economic vision for the borough and the lack of clear measurable deliverables in the action plan. This led to a review. The comments led to the holding of a workshop with councillors, officers and Atkins, the advising consultants, on the 13th of August 2018. This was a frank and useful meeting, which led to some significant revisions, one of which was the extension of the time period to 2032 to be in line with the local plan. The revised economic development strategy was considered at the Value for Money and Customer Service Overview and Scrutiny meeting on the 10th of September 2018, where the improvement was noted and endorsed, but with the decision that a small task and finish group should be established to provide final comments in the following week. This was welcomed by councillor Jim Edwards, the portfolio holder for Economic Development. Councillors Mullin and Seaborn met with Catherine Knight on the 13th of September 2018 and provided a final round of comments designed to ensure that the economic development strategy made realistic statements about Waverley Borough Council's capacity and role in influencing economic change and to address the difficulties in applying SMART, that is, specific, measurable, achievable, realistic and time-bound methodology to the action plan constituents. The conclusion. The revised economic development strategy represents a considerable improvement over the previous versions. The language is tighter and grammatical. The revised forward on pages three and four, which incidentally is pages 13 and 14 in the agenda, and the background and purpose on pages 10 and 11, which is in fact 20 and 21 in the agenda, now present a measured and realistic statement of what Waverley Borough Council can and cannot do. Perhaps the key words are on page 11, page 21 on your agenda, at the start of the purpose section, namely, "The economic development strategy recognises that the council is not able to deliver the economic development vision on its own. With the exception of its role as a local planning authority, a borough or district council is not designed, equipped or financed to act as a direct measuring stimulus stimulant to the local economy. However, the council is well placed and equipped to work in partnership with all economic stakeholders, which can exercise more direct influence by investing in the local or county economy, safeguarding existing jobs and creating new employment opportunities. The committee recognises that the action plan is intended to be a live document, which will remain in over time in the light of changing circumstances, like Brexit. It also recognises the difficulty in achieving actions that are generally specific, measurable, achievable, realistic and time-bound. It looks forward to working with officers to ensure the action plan contains actions that are SMART and can be reported on meaningfully, at least annually." Finally, an acknowledgement. The Value for Money and Customer Service Overview and Scrutiny Committee would like to express its appreciation of the willingness of officers, especially Catherine Knight, to work with elected members to develop and improve the economic development strategy. The committee is therefore happy to endorse the revised economic development strategy as fit for approval by the executive. Thank you very much.
Councillor Beaman, and also all members of the Overview and Scrutiny Committee who were involved in that piece of work, my thanks for that very comprehensive summary, but also thanks for the work that you've done in a very short space of time. I know you've been very well supported by the officer team, so again, my thanks. And I'd ask Mr Mills if he'd please pass that on to the rest of the team. But I will now move to the other speakers. And the first speaker is councillor Seaborn. Thank you.
Thank you, Leader. My message is essentially the same as the one that councillor Beaman's just delivered, but maybe in a more general and more glowing form. When the strategy first went out for consultation in May and June, it failed to articulate what the council's role would be in delivering a fairly well-defined set of themes. It failed to clearly describe how the economy of Waverley works, and it omitted discussion around several important sectors such as care and education. The rural economy was largely ignored, and the high rate of creation of new small businesses was heralded, without noting that the net creation of new businesses over time is one of the lowest amongst Surrey's boroughs. I'm really delighted that officers and the consultants have noted the extensive feedback from the consultation and have worked well with the Value for Money Overview and Scrutiny Committee to refine the initial attempt into the document that you have before you. The role of the council in understanding and championing the economy is now clearly expressed. The way that Waverley economy works is now much more clearly articulated, and the logic behind the six delivery themes is much easier to understand. The need for the council to help deliver more affordable housing to house the key workers that are needed to keep the Waverley service economy working is brought out, and the need for our planning officers to give more urgency to handling applications from the businesses that generate wealth and create jobs is identified. So I asked to speak this evening to commend the efforts of the economic delivery team in taking note of the material generated by the consultation and producing what you have before you. It's intended to be a living document, and it certainly has scope to develop, but if, as the council, we can implement this strategy, then the economy of the borough stands to benefit significantly. To wrap up, I'd like to note that the strategy places a substantial workload on the officers, and I hope that the executive will be supporting in allocating appropriate resources to allow the strategy to succeed. Thank you, Leader.
Councillor Seaborn, thank you very much. Can I move to councillor Gray next?
Thank you, Leader. I too would like to thank the portfolio holder and the officers for a very comprehensive document. And I will focus on one bit which is close to my heart, which is the rural economy. And I perhaps would ask the portfolio holder to look at page 70 and see whether we do have 65% of Waverley's population that live in the rural areas. I've always claimed 31%, but I'm happy to increase it to 65% if that's the correct figure. In line with the 31%, it says 32% of Waverley's businesses are estimated to be in the rural area. I think that's probably a good estimate. And I have a concern over the land industries. These are farms, estates, woodlands, managed areas and equestrian. And I speculate that we've probably got more horses than we've got cows in Waverley. They're very important, and they're very important to the land and to the look of the borough, one that's very attractive to people who come here and our tourist aspirations. And I think it's far more important than we potentially give it credit for in the document, partly because it's very difficult to get figures for it. It doesn't fall into the natural classifications. I mean, if you look at your own figure, we have 150 agricultural businesses employing 80 people. So if you say that, there's a number that doesn't actually employ anybody. And I don't think, that's not just an anomaly, that is the problem with the figures here. And I think that what I'd like to ask Waverley to do is to spend a bit of time to understand what our stock is, how many farms are there, and there are sources for this information. How many farms are there? How many estates are there? How many people are actually employed in that land? And I would think that we would surprise ourselves if we really do that piece of work. I think also that we should be looking at this to create policies. We don't have any policies that protect equestrian. We have policies that affect industrial, commercial, those sort of things, but we don't have any policies that protect farms, equestrian facilities, et cetera. This came up recently in a planning issue. Perhaps if we understand this more, then we perhaps can use that to influence the plan. I also would sort of join in with that and say, this is not me complaining about the portfolio holder of the borough. I think the whole borough's got to participate in this strategy. Trying to dig out the information here is very much down to all the parishes and all the other places to give you that information. And I hope that if you do undertake a piece of work on this, that you will ask and get the commitment of all of your parishes and areas to come back to you and help you with that. And I think one of the other things that came up here, we have a lot of small industrial units around the places, and I noticed that there's a very nice one down in Waverley, down in, sorry, in Oldfold, down at the bottom, which I know pretty well. There is a one slightly bigger in Dunstfold, which isn't on the map, but I'm sure that councillor Edwards will add that at some stage. But one of the things that hits you in there is that they are there because these are cheaper areas for them to work. And I wonder whether we need to encourage slightly more sophisticated parks, but not right in the expensive areas, but sort of bordering on that, where fledgling businesses can go. There may be something we need to do in those areas to provide some facilities. And that's my hobby horse. I think it's a great start. Must get the whole borough to be engaged in this rural issue. I think if anyone was there, I will stop. Woodfair, Cranley, lots of people, you saw lots of different things there. So there is lots there, but some of it's hidden. Thank you.
Councillor Gray, thank you. I'm sure that the portfolio holder has picked up on a number of your points, and when he comes back in a minute, we'll enlarge on those. But yes, there's certainly matters that you and councillor Seaborn have raised that we can take forward and look at as we work further on this document over time. Councillor Hyman.
Thank you, Leader. We'll follow that. I will not repeat any of what the previous three speakers have said. I think that, I very much hope that the portfolio holder will take on board what councillor Mullin, councillor Beaman and councillor Seaborn and Gray have said, and I fully endorse exactly what they've said. But this, I'd like to concentrate more myself, actually, on a bit that I haven't really had time to look at, and I'm not sure anybody else has, which is the last six pages, and that's the Economic Development Action Plan 18 to 20. And that is on, I think, page, where are we? Page 92, is it? I think of the, I haven't got numbers on what I've printed here, I'm afraid, and my laptop doesn't work, but I think it's page 92 or 93 where it starts off. Let's start with number one, because number one there, you'll see, says that the targets and measures there are in respect of giving more business to our local, our own local Waverley business, more of our contracts to them. It says, "Increase the share of Waverley Borough Council contracts that are awarded to local businesses by 5% by 2010." So, you know, obviously there are things in there which we need to look at. Certainly, the question, if we ignore the time travel, the question would, because I don't, I'm not worried about typos, I'm simply worried about whether anybody's read things. And I am concerned a little bit there whether we're talking about number of value. I think perhaps we should ensure that, so that residents, particularly small businesses, don't feel misled in the future when we said, yeah, we've done that, but then, you know, we're talking about, and we should perhaps articulate here, that this excludes the major contracts that are up for renewal. And so we're only looking at 5%, or increasing by 5% the amount of smaller or, you know, the small contracts. We need to define local, are people who are outside the borough local, like Viola, Glendale, they're not in the borough really, but which companies are local and which aren't. And then if we go down and perhaps look at, I could pick on number two and run through the same there and say, well, these goals here, and perhaps all of them, we should look at these goals and measures, and ask ourselves a question of, you know, how far have we got with those already? I mean, if we failed so far on those, or haven't started on them, when are we going to start? Are we going to achieve, or exactly what are we going to celebrate achieving, you know, in 2020 or by middle or end of 2020, whatever? We need a proper timeline, proper goals. We need to be able to see where we are at the moment and exactly where we're going to be in future. And with number four, which is perhaps more a hobby horse, using councillor Gray's words of mine, with respect to Brightwell's, by 2020, are we going to be able to talk about the number of jobs created, the number of local people employed, the value of inward investment to Farnham, the number of units let or pre-let, and the business rates value? So there's quite a bit that, you know, we need to look at, and this is the same all the way through. And I do apologise, it's entirely my fault for not having gone through this sooner and picked up issues. I did speak to Catherine Knight myself earlier, and she set a lot of my concerns about the strategy itself. She put a lot of my concerns at rest, which is nice, but I still do echo what the other councillors have said. The real question here is, can, is this the best that we can do? And as far as the action plan is concerned, I'd like you to tell us, is this the very best that we as a council can do? And what difference will this make? As far as the action plan is concerned, I think we can do far better, and I'm very much asking if we could perhaps, if you, the executive members, would consider splitting the recommendation tonight into two. Firstly, endorsing the strategy, as I know very much you'd like to do, but to refer the action plan back to Overview and Scrutiny, which would be the joint VFM and Environment, because it's mainly planning.
Thank you very much, councillor Hyman. Right, if I can move to the portfolio holder. Thank you, councillor Edwards.
Thank you, Leader. Before I introduce the strategy, I would like to thank the chambers of commerce, the economic development team, towns and parishes, and members of the Overview and Scrutiny Committee for their commitment and effort on bringing this strategy together. Their work has helped to create a focused strategy and a measurable action plan. This economic development strategy recognises the importance of a healthy local economy in making Waverley an attractive place and enhancing the quality of life experienced by its residents. It appreciates the vital contributions of employers, small businesses and the rural economy, and sets out how the council intends to work in partnership with these and other stakeholders. Now, Waverley's economy is a strong local service economy driven largely by the needs of a highly skilled, out commuting workforce. The out commuting workforce amounts to over one in five of the residents, residential population, and nearly half of the employed population. It's a big number. Conversely, around 20,000 workers in commute to the borough, reflecting a third of the local available jobs. So it's an in and out. We have 8,200 VAT-registered local businesses, that's VAT, registered. Many, however, are small. 91% employ fewer than 10 people, and we have the highest number of home workers in Surrey. Total business turnover in Waverley was over 4.9 billion pounds in 2017, with micro and small businesses contributing 61% of the total revenue. This is an economically vibrant place to live and work. The economic development strategy has three parts. The economic development vision, the long-term economic plan and the action plan. The economic development vision is the high-level ambition for Waverley's economy over the life of the strategy to 2032 and beyond. The delivery of the economic development vision is supported by six themes, which represent the areas in which Waverley Borough Council will work with its partners. The economic development vision for Waverley is to be a successful place where local businesses can grow and flourish, where all our rural and urban communities have access to sustainable, high-quality employment, where everyone living and working in Waverley can share in its beautiful natural environment and economic prosperity. The six key themes to deliver the vision are, first of all, to encourage sustainable business and employment growth in both our urban and rural areas, through initiatives, events and the awarding of council contracts, partnerships regionally with Surrey County Council and M3LEP, and importantly, locally with chambers of commerce. The second theme will be to provide high-quality business and employment support, helping individuals in our deprived areas with skills to enter employment, communicate effectively with the business community. Thirdly, support healthy town and village centres, working with towns and parishes, local chambers on projects to support our unique high streets. The fourth would be to encourage a successful visitor economy that is right for Waverley, encourage a visitor economy that's right for Waverley by working with partners such as Visit England, Tourism South East, the Surrey Hills and National Trust. The fifth one will be to expand links with and support for the education sector, work with the whole education sector, which is vibrant within the borough, help to maximise links and opportunities for the local economy, support the UCA in Farnham, which has been voted modern university of the year 2018 by the Times and Sunday Times, with student accommodation and workspace. Number six, support the right housing developments in Waverley, in the right areas and work in partnership with the M3LEP and other cross-boundary partners to maximise infrastructure opportunities. Now, given shrinking local authority budgets, the scope for direct investment by the council is very limited, and so its emphasis must be on playing to its strengths by building strong positive partnerships with all parts of the local business community and other key stakeholders, such as the local enterprise partnership, Surrey County Council, national public sector bodies, educational institutions and training and business support providers. The strategy has been developed following a detailed analysis of the local economy and engagement with a wide range of stakeholders. It represents the council's enthusiastic acknowledgement of the part it can play in promoting local economic success. I commend this strategy to the executive to be adopted and look forward to working with all its partners and local communities to achieve the strategy's objectives. With regard to some of the comments we've heard from the members, I think the comments from councillor Gray are very straightforward, down-to-earth, and perhaps I could ask him to try and get together with other members of the council to put into clear sentences exactly the details he's looking for, because I'm not saying he's wrong. We have tried to address the rural economy as best we can. There are details that are absent from it, but at the end of the day, it's a working document, and this will change as time goes on. And we can add to it or subtract to it whenever issues arise that need addressing. And in this particular case, I would like councillor Gray to form a small working party, if he wishes, of other interested members to look at the detail that he requires and try and work with officers to produce those details and include them, if agreed, into the strategy. With regard to councillor Hyman's comments, I understand, I think I understand where he's coming from, but if I could just read this out, let me have a look, okay. With regard to item four, the council to maximise potential benefits to the Brightwell's regeneration scheme, et cetera, and how we're working towards employment, et cetera. We're working behind the scenes pre-opening with Waverley Training Services, Farnham Job Club, and we're offering customer service training. We want to work to make Farnham a destination, working with the Chamber of Commerce and Cambridge Place. So we are doing lots of different things. There are other issues that councillor Hyman raised, and if I can come back to that at a later date, we'll put it in writing to him. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, that's fine. Councillor Edwards, anyone else wish to make any comments? Councillor Adinas.
I promise I won't speak quite as long. It's actually a point councillor Hyman made, which I agree. I mean, action plans, I have a bit of a bugbear with action plans and whether they're measurable. And probably an example, and Mr Mills will know this, as I'm always having this discussion with him, for example, on action seven, the third target, monitor number of businesses attending events, to me, that's meaningless, but I actually see it as responsibility as portfolio holder and working with Kelvin Mills to look at actions that relate to our parts of the business and make them more meaningful, because it's only people like us who actually understand what the impact of the business is and whether that target is actually worthwhile. So I actually agree with councillor Hyman, I think there needs to be a bit of work. I think all of us need to look at our own bits of business, work on it and actually tighten up the action plan. I think you need to leave that for our judgement. I think we've got to remember that this action plan is also a living document, it's not just a strategy. In fact, this is probably the one thing that will change continuously. So I hear your points, I agree with it, I think you've just got to give us that time to try and improve it with our knowledge. Thank you, Leader.
Thank you. Councillor Storey.
Thank you, Leader. I have two points. The first is to commend officers and the portfolio holder on the work that has gone into this, which I think is truly magnificent. Interestingly, I don't know whether members saw it, but in yesterday's Sunday Times, there was an article which was quite long, but the gist of it was that 60% of town dwellers across the UK are dissatisfied with their council's support for the economic infrastructure of their area. And it seems to me that here we're grasping that nettle, and I hope that the implementation of this strategy will make an impact on the public's perception of Waverley's contribution to their economic wellbeing. My second point is to endorse something which councillor Gray said relating to workspaces. I had a meeting three, four years ago with the four chambers of commerce, which the primary thing that they thought that Waverley could do to help them was to encourage people to provide affordable, small workspaces for start-ups. And it was the affordable that was the distinction. There were workspaces, but small businesses just getting started just couldn't afford it. And I think that fits in well with item 16 on the action plan relating to workspaces for UCA, and also five on the action plan where it's looking to provide craft workspaces. These are things which I think could be brought forward reasonably well with a bit of encouragement from the council. And Ray Tyndall, some years ago, did exactly that, not in Farnham, he did it in Borden, but he provided workspaces, start-up areas for new businesses, and they were very successful. new businesses, and they were very successful. You could only have them for six months, if you couldn't survive the six months, then you had to move on, but hopefully to a bigger, newer place. Those are my points.
Thank you very much. And councillor Hall.
Thank you, leader. I mean, speaking as an economist, Waverley, you know, is a complex interplay between investment, industry, employment, wealth creation, and various commercial sectors. It's important to note that Waverley, you know, is not a closed economy from this perspective. We've got mobility of labour, capital, and investment. Sure, there are areas which require more study, or maybe even more in-depth study, but this document is a very good start, has the scope to deliver and develop, the ability to grow, and the flexibility to change going forward. I'd like to congratulate the portfolio holder and thank all those who contributed to it. I think it's a truly excellent piece of work.
Councillor Hall, thank you. I think that's an excellent summary on this piece of work, and hopefully across the various speakers and the portfolio holder, we've answered some of the other questions that have been raised across the evening on this. As I say, my thanks again to everybody involved, because it has been a significant amount of work, and also to everybody who's contributed externally as well, from the chambers to the various towns and parishes and so forth. And as I say, I know this is a really good piece of work, it's a really good start, but it is, as we've said all along, a living, breathing document, and I have no doubt that as we learn even more about our borough, as various factors change, or there's significant changes and alters, so we will be coming back with this and various aspects of work on it. But as it is, we have one recommendation to this item. Executive, is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. So if we move to item seven, which is the Treasury Management Framework, and that's the capital strategy, I have one speaker which is councillor Hyman, and then I'll ask the portfolio holder to take that item. Councillor Hyman.
Thank you, chairman. I think I've said before that it would seem so much easier if we had the introduction to the item from the portfolio holder before the, before members started speaking, but I'll probably say it again another day. This capital strategy talks about the assessment and the review of capital projects and how we're going through them and doing them, and if I can refer you, members, to page 101, room 101, and there, it's got certain, a lot of paragraphs and good words about project initiation at paragraph 2.2, it tells us that we've got a formal process on a rolling basis of supervision and review of projects that's been drawn up, it tells us that the work's going to include undertaking, that we need to undertake all the preparatory work to fully understand the requirements of a project before the budget is sought. Plenty of good stuff in there which I think everybody would agree with. What I really want to know is, does this apply to things we're already doing, where we've got projects that are going on at Oxford Ridge, leisure centres projects, to some extent also in planning projects with East Street and Dunsfold, particularly Memorial Hall and that sort of thing? Whether that review process and all the due diligence which is, you know, we talk about in here, is going to be adopted from today or from next week's council meeting, perhaps, if it's going, assuming it's going through council. Paragraph 2.4 over the page talks about the risk and due diligence, and there is a link there to the work that we've been doing on the Audit Committee, there's a particular, specific link to the Risk Register. I am, as a member of that committee, obviously aware that there's a link between the Treasury Management, the system and the Risk Register, but slightly concerned that we as an Audit Committee haven't had the expected input on this bit. I might be wrong about that, but I'd like you to confirm for me if possible that that has all been before us for, to take a look at. My main question there, of course, is, you know, when do we start? Is this all in place already so that I can come to you and quote paragraph 2.2 and say, hey, look, ensuring transparent, ensured transparent decisions are being taken, I'd like to see this, that, and the other, please, because I'd love to be able to do that. Does it start now? Thank you.
Can I ask Mr Clark to start the response and then councillor Hall?
Of course, lady, yeah, thank you. So, leader, this document is somewhere where we want to be, and if I can turn members' attention to paragraph 2.1 in the report itself, which is on page 98. We brought this to the Value for Money overview and scrutiny committee, and the scrutiny committee made a really valid observation, which is that this is about where we want to be, there's some good practice in place already, and the scrutiny committee last year undertook a really thorough review of our capital process, there was a subgroup led by councillor Band, and so this document tries to put all of that good practice into one place and link it with our treasury strategy. And so, members quite rightly recognise, and that first bullet point reflects the comments made at the committee, which was that let's change the tense from present to future, because this is an aspirational strategy. We are partway there, and the bids coming in this year for next year's capital programme are starting to fit with this, plus we've got a new project management framework that's been launched by Robin and Louise Norrie's team corporately. So we're putting all of the components in place. There will be some projects that have either completed recently or coming to the end that may not be sort of fully compliant with this, just because they started before this methodology was devised and put into here. So it's certainly somewhere that we are going, starting to go now, and we will be going in future with our capital projects. As far as the risks concerned, councillor Hyman mentioned, I mean, we had some workshops today facilitated on risk, and we had some a few months ago as well, and so what this document's looking to do is just draw a link across to our Risk Register and our approach to risk, and why it's relevant to capital schemes, because they tend to be high-value, run over a period of time, and have quite a lot of resource going into as well. So there is a link to risk, and that's what this document's doing, it's just pulling all those strands together. Thank you, leader.
Thank you. Can I move to councillor Hall?
Thank you, leader. Councillor Hyman, to answer specifically, obviously, the initiation approach outlined in the strategy isn't going to be applicable to projects which you're already running, because they've already been initiated. Obviously, we don't need to initiate them twice. The capital strategy complements the overall investment framework, which includes the Treasury Management Strategy approved by council on the 24th of April 2018. Property and asset-related investments are outside the scope of the Treasury Management Strategy as are derivatives, just in case there's any follow-on questions regarding that. The capital strategy reflects the comments of the Value for Money and the Customer Services Overview and Scrutiny Committee, which endorses the strategy to executive and council. We're therefore putting this forward to be approved by full council, and although we're working towards implementing it currently, because it is good practice to do so, we can obviously only fully implement it once council have approved it. Thank you, leader.
Thank you. Colleagues, any other comments, or can we move to the recommendation? In that case, we'll move to the recommendation under item seven. Is that agreed? Thank you. And we're now moving to item eight, which is the delivery of the Housing Capital and Cyclical Works Programme 2019 to 20. Councillor Mrs King, would you like to introduce this item?
Yes, thank you very much indeed, leader. Actually, this item follows on beautifully from the last one. As colleagues will remember, rent reduction of 1% for four years had a significant impact on our capital and cyclical works in housing, resulting in a very stagnant house maintenance as we stand at the moment, and it gave us a static customer satisfaction rate of only 79%, which is just not good enough. The strategic objective is to maximise our housing assets, minimise our liabilities, and develop a capital programme which would meet all our tenants' aspirations. New rent standard, the new rent standard of CPI plus 1% for five years from 2020 will enable us to catch up with the works that were suspended due to the rent reduction, for instance, kitchen, new kitchens and new bathrooms. To achieve this, more resources are needed, hence I quote page 101 on the previous report on project initiation, paragraph seven, this fits in perfectly. We've assessed it, we need more resources to be able to project manage the increase in capital works, and if you look on the table on page 109 at paragraph 2.2, you will see where we would like to allocate these resources. The programme is estimated to cost in the region of 4.1 million, and to this end, the HRA business plan will be realigned during the budget-setting process later this year. So the request is to increase our staffing in that area to be able to deliver the sort of services we wish to be able to deliver. Thank you.
Councillor Mrs King, thank you very much. I think we all agree that we have a housing policy and we have housing within our borough for a source to be proud of. I know some of us, myself and councillor King, our chief executive, we were all at the opening just a couple of weeks ago of the new housing in phase one up at Oxford Ridge, and I think that's when it really hit home again, seeing those families and those people in their new homes, not houses, new homes, how important that is, and how important it is, therefore, that we really do keep on top of this, and we really do make sure that our housing stock really is fit for the future, and we have a really, really robust plan in place. And that's not just about the maintenance and everything, it's about how we're really going to ensure that we monitor that, how we're going to make sure that we really deliver on that, and that's what is really drawn out and comes out very clearly from the proposals before you. So I'm really pleased to see this. I know that from talking generally to members across party here, there is a huge level of support for our housing and for the housing across the borough that we are able to deliver to so many residents, and I am extremely supportive of this proposal, and I'm sure that the rest of the executive will join me in that as well. So with that in mind, colleagues, unless anyone else wishes to speak, shall we move to the recommendations before you? And for that item, we have two recommendations. Are they agreed? Thank you very much. And if I move to item nine, which is the playing pitch strategy for 2018, and before I ask the portfolio holder to introduce that and talk on that item, we have one speaker, councillor Hyman, would you like to speak on that item?
Absolutely delighted, leader, thank you very much. Yes, of course, if it wasn't for the two troublemakers on the side of me, you'd be able to go home by half past seven, but, and I do apologise for the part I'm playing in that. A little bit worried about, in here, things that I can't see in here, I haven't had the chance to speak to staff about this today and get anything clarified, but page 118, for instance, tells us that in respect of tennis courts, we're going to protect all tennis courts. Is that a policy which basically says that the tennis courts at Farnham College, which we're removing, are not going to be removed? What are we doing? And it also talks about Dunsfold, what are we doing? Can we add this into Dunsfold? There are all sorts of questions that arise. In fact, page 116 and the last points in respect of football pitches says that we'll create additional pitches within the locality of large housing developments. Obviously definitions there, if we're going to use this as policy in the Joint Planning Committee, if it's within the local plan, and I'd like you to perhaps, you know, refer me across to where, or give us some assurances of where this is in LPP1 or LPP2. What does in the locality of large housing developments mean? What does large mean? Is there actually a size there associated with it? Because it's not the same major or whatever, is it? How can the Joint Planning Committee use this to ensure that leisure facilities are provided, and particularly in respect of if a section 106 agreement is needed to go on top of CIL in future? I'm getting a bit confused these days of how we're going to apply this. Of course, we probably won't find out until we start applying SIL, but maybe nobody knows. But I do also have a problem, I just can't find any mention of the memorial ground in there, which is a major football pitch in as much as it's used by Farnham Town Football Club, and there are plans elsewhere previously that seem to have been set to move the ground to the Weyden Lane landfill site. That may be on hold until after next May, I would imagine, but what does this strategy mean in planning policy terms for Farnham, for that sort of thing? And I can't see it in there, I don't see anything specific, and I'd like to know how we apply the policy there. Thank you very much, leader.
Councillor Adinas, would you like to take the item and then I'll come back to councillor Hyman on some of his queries?
Okay, this is a substantial strategy which reflects the importance that we as a council place on sport within the health and wellbeing of our residents. Fortunately tonight, we have an excellent summary which has been condensed to five pages. I'm sure people would have been delighted if I spoke about about 170 pages tonight. The strategy provides an evidence-based document which not only highlights sports provision and demand, but provides evidence to justify developer contribution towards sports facility infrastructure improvements around the borough by section 106, pick and sell. It also deals with maintenance, quality improvements, additional pitch provision to meet the demand from development. There's only one recommendation, leader, which is page 114 of your papers and page four of the agenda. Thank you.
Councillor Adinas, thank you. Any other speakers on that? No? To the points that you raised councillor Hyman, and you've raised a number of points that we weren't aware that you were going to, so what we can ensure we do for you is actually come back to you with some written answers on those, so that you've got clarity on them. I'm afraid I didn't quite get, I think there might have been a problem with the microphone, but I didn't quite get all of the items that you were raising, so it would be really helpful if you've got those written down, if you could let Mr Mills have those, and then we'll get those progressed for you so you can have a written response across this week on those items. Thank you.
Sorry, leader, may I just?
So, colleagues, thank you councillor Hyman.
May I just say, thank you very much for that. All I want to avoid really is having to do that sort of thing at next week's council meeting, so which officer would I need specifically? It would be Kelvin, I know. I can't give him the notes now, it's so scribbling and it's everything, so.
So, colleagues, we will move to the recommendation, which is below that the executive approved the playing pitch strategy for 2018, and can I ask if you're all in agreement with that? Thank you very much. If we move to item 10, which is the Budget Management Report, councillor Hall.
Thank you, leader. This report reviews the position against the budget to date for the general fund, the housing revenue account, and the capital programmes. There are no significant variances to bring to the attention of the executive. There are two items to note, however. The National Trust approval for Frenchham redevelopment project has been granted. The next step is to obtain common consent, and planning consent will be sought in the coming months. However, due to the length of the build, and wishing to minimise the impact on users, the uses of Frenchham Great Pond in the summer months, it's expected that construction will take place in autumn 2019. Therefore, it is requested that 720,000 of the budget available is rescheduled to 2019, 2020. Secondly, the phasing of the delivery of Site A at Oxford Ridge require most of the build costs will fall into the 2019-2020, so the majority of the 4.8 million budget will need to be rescheduled into the next financial year. The HRA new build capital programme includes budget buyback of two properties, one of which has fallen through. A executive permission, therefore, is requested to switch the funding to another buyback opportunity that will enable a redevelopment scheme at a price to be agreed by the strategic director and the portfolio holder for housing. More detail on the proposed buyback can be found in the exempt annex 1. More detail on the proposed buyback can be found in the exempt annex one. There are three recommendations, colleagues.
Colleagues, any questions or queries or comments on that item? Right, in that case then, we've got three recommendations under that item. Are those agreed?
Agreed.
Colleagues, can I just move back briefly to item nine? We seem to have a slight anomaly on some of the paperwork. So, Mr Taylor, can I just get you to clarify that particular item and the recommendation, please?
Yes, thank you, leader. So the recommendation you put to the executive members there was, as it was printed within the front agenda, which was that the playing pitch strategy was to be agreed by the executive, which was what the recommendation should be. Just want to recognise that within the main body of the report, so on page 114, actually that was typed out as being to go to the council for agreement, which was incorrect. So I just want to give members the opportunity to be clear that what was agreed was that it was agreed by the executive, obviously, leader. If there was any further comments that members wanted to make or a different decision, then you could do that, otherwise it's just to confirm that decision that you've made.
I think we were all clear on that when we went through the papers earlier today, weren't we, colleagues? Yes. Thank you, we're all clear. Thank you for clarifying that item, Mr Taylor.
Apologies for the mistake.
No, not at all, and our decision on item nine and that recommendation, which was carried by all executive members, stands. Thank you. And we will now move to the final item of the agenda, which is item 11, which is the lease of the cricket square nets and scorebox at Graveswood Green. I'm not sure if that's councillor Adinas or councillor Hall, which, right, okay. Councillor Adinas, would you like to start the introduction on that?
I will indeed, leader. I was told if I spoke, I'd about two minutes, so I better crack on. Graveswood Cricket Club is an active club with a strong youth side. It's been playing in Graveswood Green for a number of years. The current lease is due to expire at the end of this year, and this report seeks authority to grant a 40-year lease. This will allow greater opportunities to obtain grants to improve their facilities and encourage others to participate in sport. The proposed terms are an exempt, but suffice to say, they follow the normal, what we do expect. One recommendation, which is on page four and five of the agenda. Thank you, leader.
Councillor Hall?
Thank you, leader. I mean, this is the latest in a long line of support for community sport that Waverley's given. We've had the Oldham Football Club, the Godalming Cricket Club, the Hazlemere Rugby Club, the Hazlemere Hockey Club, something with the Farnham Football Club, and there's a few more in the pipeline. I mean, this underlines our commitment to make sure that sport in our communities is really expanded and supported by the council. You know, I myself spend a lot of time playing rugby in a community club, or rather sort of walking around doing it, but it makes a huge difference to the community if you have active sports facilities, cricket, rugby, football, hockey, athletics. And this is, as I said, the latest in a long line of stuff that Waverley is doing to expand that capacity in the borough. It's not the first one we've done, and it definitely won't be the last, so I'd like to congratulate the portfolio holder.
Thank you, councillor Hall. I think we all recognise the real importance here of sport in terms of the health and wellbeing of our residents in the community in our borough, and as a council, we recognise that, we've recognised that in our various health and wellbeing strategies and in our various sports and leisure strategies and our work over the years within the whole leisure area of the council. And we continue to do that today with this particular recommendation before you. I'm really pleased that we've got this coming forward, and as councillor Adinas and councillor Hall said, there's one recommendation to this item. Colleagues, is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. I believe we have no need to exclude press or public tonight, Mr Taylor. In that case, can I close the meeting? Thank you very much.